All right. Let's see from our agenda, we have a relatively, we have a relatively short meeting. Well, so it appears, but we'll see as, as the night goes on. So the first thing I'd ask, welcome any comments in the public if you'd like to address the board. Any other comments you'd like to make?
Yes, sir.
Please stand up, identify yourself, let us know what's going on.
Uh, my name is McManus Michael. I'm along by Champlain Street. And a couple of meetings ago, I asked the board about the village electric situation, and I know we don't get it on that end of town, I understand that. And when all was said and done, I asked if there was any way they would take into consideration maybe the idea of giving us a little bit of a break on our water and sewer. So I don't know if that was ever mentioned to you or brought up or... Now, I'm, I, at this point, we're still waiting for FOIA request from NICEAG, and we will be getting some, we'll be coming to the town too.
The village or the town?
The village, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Concerning anything to do with any talks or any deals with NICEAG about trying to get, you know, village electric for the seventeen houses on the west, west end of the village there. But at this point, I'm just, uh, I was just wondering if you did hear about that or had any consideration to that idea?
We have, we approved the minutes, I can tell you that, and there hasn't been any, anything on the agenda yet. So when something comes up, there'll be a board discussion of it that night.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just where, years ago, me and Brian Pelkey and George Rivers met with the representatives from NICEAG, probably six years ago, and they come in right off the bat, they said there's no way, at that time.
Right.
They would let the village take that over, because they got upper-tier apartments that run off them, plus behind your, all that behind your house.
Right.
So that was then, they made a change of mind.
I was told by someone at NICEAG not too long ago, but he wouldn't verify this, that's why we sent the FOIA request for any information that they had, that back in the nineties, they offered for thirty thousand dollars to let that end go to the village, but they wanted permission to run a natural gas line in the village set now. Can you tell me, or does anybody have information?
No, we'll look at your FOIA request when you're in, and we'll put it on the board agenda, so that we can all research and do the justice. Thank you for bringing it up.
Sure. Well, one other thing, and this is just a minor thing, but to me, being a veteran, it's important, your flag's getting a little battered out there, the one on strike, they start to come off of it, so I would appreciate it, you know, maybe soon you can take care of that.
We will, we'll get to that, sir. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Anyone else, anything they'd like to say? Okay. Let's look at the meeting, uh, meeting minutes from the meeting of June 6th, the graph minutes you have in front of you, you have time to review them. I make a motion to approve those minutes for, for that meeting of June 6th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
For the second.
Second.
Trustee Ma, discussion? A little in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Uh, we're gonna review the bills which you've received, uh, we have eight pages of them, and you've had them out for a few days.
No additions or deletions.
No additions or deletions for our treasurer, thank you, sir.
Page three of the bills, I'd like to ask the treasurer for an explanation of an item, please.
Could we have a motion to pay the bills, and then we'll have some discussion?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
I'll second it.
Okay, and now discussion, and Mr. Treasurer, trustee Dart asks you to add a question for him.
Our sent on, on page three of eight, they were in Solana, and we're, we pay like we always do, a certain amount of fines collected to the state, this was five thousand three hundred ninety-three and twenty-five cents. Do you know what, our share was that of the total fines, because this is not the total of the fines for a certain period?
No, well.
All these fines are generated by all agencies, including our own, within the village's limits.
Total amount collected was eight thousand two sixty-nine oh six.
Okay, so we, can we assume that the difference between eighty-two and fifty-three is?
The village received two thousand eight seventy-five eighty-one.
Yeah. Okay. This probably was for one month, correct?
This is for the month of May.
Yeah. Thank you. One other question for our sent, on page five of eight, there was an amount paid of six hundred ninety-three dollars to the county department of something, I guess. It says refund on account number thirty-two, can you explain that, please?
Which, what page is that?
Uh, five of eight. It's under the electric department?
Yeah, that's, that's return of heat money that was not used for a customer. It went off, it went off the system or something like that.
All right, thank you very much, that's all I have for questions, thank you.
Any further discussion? A little in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next, correspondence, uh, Bill O'Malley, the rally correspondent from the third committee. Okay, well, first order of business, it's always a pleasure, I'm gonna move down to the front here, and I'd ask Mr. Karen Gilroy to come forward. I have a proclamation here regarding the Fourth of July celebration, and one of our outstanding young citizens, gonna be receiving some, uh, proclamation in her, so, Ms. Gellino, could you come forward? Okay, this proclamation says, whereas the Rousas Point Fourth of July Fourth Committee, as in the past, asked the elementary class of Rousas Point Elementary School to create a picture depicting the Fourth of July celebration, and whereas the elementary classes of Rousas Point Elementary School participated by submitting pictures to be used for this event, whereas Minerva Gellino, a fifth grader at Rousas Point Elementary, submitted a picture which was chosen by the Rousas Point Fourth of July Committee as the winning entry. Here's the picture here, if you all will see, it's a beautiful rendition, very patriotic. So therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rousas Point would like to thank Minerva Gellino for her efforts in creating this picture, and for it to be resolved that I, Daniel Lates to Laterno, Mayor of the Village of Rousas Point, present Minerva Gellino with this proclamation honoring her outstanding effort. Thank you, ma'am, great job, we really appreciate your participation. Okay, uh, the picture is on the Fourth of July celebration poster, and I believe you have another little...
Small.
Another little gift, so besides the proclamation, you've got something that you might be able to spend, so, thank you very much, again. Great job.
Very good.
Okay, that's always pleasant, to see the youth of our community, you know, joining in and helping out. Uh, I have a couple of things that I'm just gonna mention that, that are not on the agenda real quickly, I just received them today, one of them is, the county youth bureau sent us an outline of numbers for the rosters for the number of individuals from all the different township and villages, participating in basketball, baseball, softball, soccer. Uh, they have the official rosters up for that, and I'm very pleased to say that Rousas Point has a total of three hundred and forty participants, second only to the town of Pottsburg, which has four eighty-nine, quite, quite a large town, and so, we also have some T-ball, about forty-two players, we have tracks, street hockey, tennis, swimming, we have archery craft, reading, and theater, so, our parents are definitely engaged, and, you know, we have a lot of volunteers, our recreation workers are doing a good job, and, so, we're, the Troop can have things to do in the, in the summer months, besides riding their bike in the pier, so to speak. Okay, and, uh, I'm gonna hold off on the last thing, because I know trustee Dart is gonna be talking about the red path, and I just have a little bit of additional information when he finishes that. So that's all I have, so I'll turn it over to trustee Moore.
I have nothing, this seems like the village is going good, it's looking good, the fires look really good.
Yeah, it is quite. We do have, uh, the lake shore being trimmed now, we, well, the state prisoners are working on that now, part of their work detail, so we're happy to see that. Okay, thank you, trustee Ma.
The last thing I have is, we gotta decide, they've gotta decide what we're gonna do with the old, old three zero five fire truck. Do you wanna put it up for surplus, do you wanna just put it for sale? That's something that we gotta think about, perhaps.
For our, for our procedures, it's, you know, it's gotta be surplus, and then it, it has to be offered for sale. Uh, we have to decide, I think, whether we're gonna put a minimum bid on that sale.
I think we should.
Evaluate, you know, what, what the actual cost of it is, and I don't think we, I don't think we wanna sell it for five dollars.
Mr. Mayor.
Just a scrap line, it's worth a lot more, so, um, what were your, you had some thoughts on this?
Well, in discussion with the fire chief, apparently the place that we bought the new truck, the new three zero five, as the way I understood it, has made an offer of sixteen hundred dollars. Uh, it's going to a school, it's, you know, it's not one to another fire service, it's actually a group that raised the funds themselves, and have offered sixteen hundred dollars for the truck.
A fire school?
Well, perhaps maybe we can ask the, the...
Spreading through that, our chief is here?
Yes. It's a, it's a school that teaches young children, sixteen, seventeen-year-olds, law enforcement, firefighting, those kind of things.
But, but the point is, if, if they get it, they don't need the sirens and the lights, we can sell that stuff or, or keep it for other trucks, uh, there's a generator, there's a diesel generator in there that's gotta be worth, I would think, a minimum of five hundred dollars. So, we just gotta decide, you guys gotta decide what you wanna do, if you wanna put it up for big.
That's not a little founder, I think.
No, it's fire, it's a fire training school.
So we can't just...
We have to.
All right, um, well, I, I think we have, I think we, you know, we're gonna surplus it, I think we probably should put it out the bid with a minimum bid, just to see what it is, I mean, or, and we'd have to ask our attorney about this, whether or not we could simply sell it right to an educational, you know, institution of this. Uh, you know, I don't, I don't think we're gonna make a ton of money on it.
Well, I can tell you in the past, if I remember correctly, when we got our new fire truck, three zero three, the old one was surplus, and I think the intention was we were gonna get, make money for it, and it ended up going for thirty-five hundred dollars, I think, and that was in far better shape than the, than this one, so, I mean, even though I think sixteen hundred dollars is a little light, maybe you guys think it's acceptable, I, I don't know.
I think it's light, but it's going to a good, going to a good training place.
If we eventually encourage more volunteer firefighters in the state of New York, could we counter their offer, if that's, if that's the way that we go with twenty-five hundred?
The other thing is, I don't believe it's in the state of New York, is this in Pennsylvania, Mike?
It's in Delaware, actually.
Delaware, okay.
Well, I guess, you know, race and wide, it is a thing, but I, I think, they raise the money themselves, but I think if we put, if we put it up for sale with a minimum bid of, let's say, twenty-five hundred, give them the opportunity to come in at that price, do a little bit more fundraising.
I think that's a good idea, though, that's, let's counter them with twenty-five hundred and make it, make it a bunch.
Well, we're gonna, we'll, how about, we put it up for bid, with a minimum, we put, we, you know, people can seal bids on it, but a minimum of twenty-five hundred, that's the minimum bid, and we'll see what kind of response we get, and I think we can, we'll have the chief personally notify this group, say, look, the minimum bid's twenty-five hundred, and probably, you know, we go, we go from there.
How long a bid's there?
Uh, I don't think we have it spelled out, do you know our sent, if, we have a...
No, I mean, it's up, it's up to you guys.
So we could, you know, a month? Thirty days?
I would say so. Thirty days, and, and what do you allow to go with it? Is the generator going with it, the whole, the whole package, lights, sirens?
Is there anything, I'm gonna ask the chief again, is there anything on there that we should be keeping as something we could, we could use in our department, or is purely that stuff obsolete, or?
Everything that we've wanted, we've taken off it, and then some, we've taken all the equipment off it at this point, and I would say if it's going to an emergency services organization, then some of that stuff should go back on the truck, because those ladders and suction hoses generally come with a fire truck, but if it's going out to be...
It goes with them, you know, learning how to use a generator and that stuff.
And you gotta say what's on, with surplus, you gotta say what's on.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so we'll start, if we could start the surplus procedure for sale of that item, uh, and we'll put a minimum bid of twenty-five hundred, once all that's done, from the day that it's first advertised, we'll have it for thirty days, and we'll open the bids after that time period.
Sounds good.
All right? So that's the, yeah, let's, let's do that in the form of a motion, so, make, the motion.
Make, make the motion, with what you just said, twenty-five hundred dollars minimum bid, and it's gonna run for a duration of thirty days, and I feel that it should be offered to the people that bid sixteen hundred at that price before it's publicly put up for surplus. If it's sold...
If we can do that.
I'm, I'm almost positive we can.
What are your guys' feelings on that?
I mean, we sold, we sold fire, we sold both police cars, I talked before, we didn't vote a bid. Probably sold them private individuals.
Well, okay, so the motion is, we're gonna, we're gonna put a twenty-five hundred dollar minimum bid on it, uh, we're gonna surplus, we'll start the surplus procedure, we're gonna ask our chief to notify, whatever the name of this, notify Delaware Academy of Public Safety and Security, that the price will be twenty-five hundred dollars. Uh, do you have pretty regular response with that, Mike?
I have an email address for the person that's...
Maybe you could send that out to them, see, get a response back, and let the team know, and then, uh, if they, they can't do it, it's going in the paper, uh, and we'll go from there. So that, that's where the motion is, we have a second on that?
Second.
Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion's carried. Okay, anything else, trustee Ma?
No, that's all I have.
Trustee Arnold.
On, uh, garbage cans for the dump, dump, everybody's got a copy of them?
Susan.
Uh, this is a pretty well-made garbage can, it's velvet on it, I know it ain't the, the best looking, but it's heavy, heavy duty.
Is that, yeah.
It's pretty heavy duty, and, uh, you can kick it, and you can run over it with a car, your car bumped into it, it's not gonna break or nothing, it's, it's pretty well-made, it's about a three-quarters of an inch thick, and if that holds for seventy-five bucks, I think we oughta purchase, and they got a handle on them where we could take them, I don't think they'll blow away, but there's a place that we could put a chain on it, anchor it, a pole or something, or whatever.
Where do you want them placed?
Six places in the village, I think we oughta put one at the pier, uh, one down by, uh, Sandy Deli, or whatever, uh, one by the coffee shop, one that the fires, uh, railroad, one on the corner of Maple and Academy, on the corner.
Well, I remember why we took the other ones off.
Yes.
Like a lot of people, they were putting residential garbage in it, they were bagging out of their houses and stuff, and actually we even found an air conditioner in one of them.
Yeah.
Is your garbage all over the village, that's why you're looking at these now, or?
Well, we're just trying to make, make the village a little more familiar, I mean, there's a lot of people that sit here, there, and stuff, like in front of coffee shop, or whatever, and, or bicycles, or whatever, come by and stuff, there ain't no place to throw nothing.
People walk in their dogs.
People walk in their dogs.
A few trashcans up there, ain't that what you think?
No, there's only one trashcan, it's over to the library, Cody moved it from, by Myers, over to the library.
Tell me you got one of them.
We did.
And they took, they took them off, because they weren't the red style can. Do we still have them?
The ones that we...
No, there, there's nothing, nothing left.
The ones that we need have either a lid on them, where you can only slide small things in, or they have a round hole on top.
Right, yeah.
Just a small arc.
Well, I looked into them, and them are at least two hundred bucks in a couple pieces.
Well, we could might, change, change the cover shot, or modify the cover, just accept a certain size thing, if we wanted to go this, or the cover we modify ourselves.
Generally, our, and this has got a flip cover like the...
Right.
Generally, our, I don't know if that's...
Garbage cans on the street are usually have a little hole, or a cover on them, or...
Right, some kind of hole for you.
Yeah, them, them start at two hundred bucks.
Well, um...
Even if we got a couple of them, then, if you want to go the other ones...
I think we left problems with them.
I mean, the one thing you had last meeting, they usually picked, yes, them were perfect.
Yeah.
But they were pricey.
Yes.
But you give them a payment, you know? Yeah.
I mean, a pier was mine, if I think of Main Street, you're gonna get a lot of people.
Oh, yeah, oh, I'm sure, oh, yeah.
You're gonna get...
But, so you found some that were about two hundred dollars a piece, and half a smaller...
Staples, yeah, yeah, had a little small hole on the top, similar, same size, about thirty gallons, thirty-five gallons.
Plastic.
Plastic, yeah.
I've seen, I mean, a lot of the different catalogs that come in, the parks and recreation and like that, there's some that are like, they're like a conglomerate stone, you know, and they've got a little top on it, and they'll get, they'll through the side.
You can't pick one of them.
Yeah, you don't, you don't pick those up and go away with them, you know?
Yeah, about five hundred bucks, huh?
Five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
No, you're not gonna spend three thousand dollars on that, that's for sure.
No.
But, maybe if we got three, three at two hundred?
Mm-hmm. Well, it would certainly help.
Yeah.
Three this summer, and three next summer.
I'm, I'm worried about, once you guys start talking about, that big...
Right, yeah, yeah, it does have a big, yeah.
You know, I mean, I'm talking about people taking advantage of it, you know, or, who knows, you know?
And most of the time, they just, like soda bottles and, and paper from a sandwich or something like that, that they want to throw in.
Are there the restaurants that paint, do people throw garbage from their place or anything, or just...
A few places are, yeah.
See, it's a pitch and out, pay for it, then.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we want to, uh, we still have to keep it running back and forth.
Oh, that's okay, no, no big deal.
I don't, I think, uh, well, I know, the summer started yesterday, um, so we wanna, you know, be able to move on this fairly soon, if the board can agree, um, we could find a garbage can that trustee Arnold was talking about, and pick up three of those, and get them out there, with one of the smaller tops, and, six hundred dollars, we can buy six hundred dollars.
Sure.
Don't you say that to Mr. Treasurer, I just reached in his pocket and did it, that's what we're gonna give it anyway, so, um, that's, would the board like to entertain something like that?
I make a motion that we buy three, with a small lid from, or from staples.
Up to three, up to six hundred dollars.
Up, up to six hundred dollars, yeah.
All right, so a second on that, further discussion?
I'm gonna give Ben a U-line catalog, which has all kinds of plastic things in it, plus office supplies, but it should have to come in it, just so that if we see something better, cheaper, then...
Okay, the U-line, you're good.
Yeah, make sure it can be chained down.
Okay, so you've got a six hundred dollar limit, and we want something that's variable with us, for the, the, the smaller, smaller thing.
Okay, I'll bring it back the next meeting.
All right, so...
Okay, also, at the state dock, I looked at the sign down at the thing, and I think the best, the best thing we, we could do down there, I think we could fill that in with, with money, and paint over it green, just the fishing.
Yeah, it looked kinda, it looked, you know, I was down there at school, and I kept looking, and it looked kinda out of kilter, you know, I mean, I didn't really find an easy way to do it, other than replace the sign, you know? There's so many provisions on that thing.
Oh, I know, yeah.
I mean, it...
Kind of expensive place to sign, if, if we can just try it and see what it looks like, I don't think we're gonna ruin it.
Do we have that color paint?
Well, I'm sure we could get color on it, the green, it just looks like a forest green, or whatever.
There's gotta be some kind of proprietary color from that sign company, I would imagine.
So they don't need for a sign there at all.
Oh, Village Beer should have a sign, I don't know if we gotta have all the provisions on it, I think there's no biking, no rollerblading, no skating, no fishing, no, I don't know, there's a lot, plus...
Common sign.
Yeah, um, if we, if we needed that, we could get a little metal sign, stick it off in a corner somewhere, you know, well, I don't think we've had really any trouble with any of that stuff, and, you know, it's meant to be used by the residents, I know by the other day, there was a whole bunch of the bikers that come down, would stop down there, and...
Yeah.
Were sitting there and enjoying a, a bottle of water, and, so, I, you know, I don't know if they ought to be cited, just 'cause they're, they're not physically riding their bicycles out there, I don't know, uh, we, we can try that, but I, I, I'm skeptical about how that's gonna look, but...
You want to get rid of the sign?
I'd like to get a sign that just says, you know, Village Beer.
Yeah, they're trying to get rid of all that stuff. The kids aren't doing skate coordinating, they're too busy texting, no phone down there.
Hold on, I'll check, it's gotten a little... Yeah?
You gotta see it.
Yeah, we don't need a very big sign, just, something that says, no swimming, no swimming or no diving, that's the two things.
The road end, or where you'd start walking out from, just the rules, right at the base of the pier.
Yeah, that's where the sign is right now.
And, yeah, the no swimming, diving, the last two things on there.
Yeah, really, the only two they should stay in.
If we, if we can find, uh, if we can find a color to match it, we could start with the fishing, see if that works, because we've already had, we've already had a motion that, we don't allow, we allow fishing down there, it was part of the original intent of the grant, so, um, I guess, we might as well try that, you guys wanna, you wanna go with a test to see if you can do that?
Do you want to cover the potential with my, 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 sorry?
Fill it in with a little plastic wood, like it's definitely a little bomb built.
Well...
Well, trustee Arnold, you a volunteer to do this? You gonna...
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll do that, yeah.
We need to get the color matches, the big thing.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it's so, no, I'm sure it can be filled in, it's great, there's no gold leaf on the sign or anything else like the other signs, so, um, it should be, well, let's, uh, we'll leave it in your capable hands, and see if you can find, uh, let's just start with fishing, see what, you know?
Right, yeah.
And, and trying to match the color.
Also, on the, on the pier, uh, I was down there a couple times, and I guess they tried to clean the, the mold off of the thing with a pressure washer or whatever.
Yeah, it looked pretty good.
But, I think they used too much pressure, or something, because, boy, you, you don't wanna rub your hands across it too hard, because you're gonna get some slivers.
It's composite.
Yeah, well...
I was gonna say, I looked at it today, it wasn't bad.
Yeah, well, you try to rub your hand on...
The benches?
The benches, yeah.
The benches, I see.
Yeah, don't rub your hand on the benches, because you are gonna get some slivers or something on your hand, I guarantee your hands.
Well, let's, you know, let's, we'll, we'll, uh, look into that, see if we need to shank it down, I mean, that's not...
Either shank it down, or, if we do, if we do put a, a, a sealer on it, I think it ought to be a clear sealer, like a Thompson water seal, or something like that, or whatever, just to preserve it, yeah, on the pier itself, on the, on the gazebo itself.
Well, yeah, the gazebo is gonna be, that's already, that's being done, that is gonna be painted with a semi-transparent stain that shows the wood grain.
Right.
And it has a water repellent in it, so, and it's gonna, I think trustee Dart mentioned, uh, a good way to match the color was to look at the color of boards inside the roof that aren't faded yet, so we've got a color that pretty much matches that, and that's the whole thing, it's gonna be stained like that, so, that's gonna happen.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Anything else?
Then who, who plans on doing that?
Well, it's either gonna be, if we, if there's enough time for the, the work crew to do it, if not, it'll be all of our labor who will...
Well, 'cause I think we oughta take and, mention it to them that we gotta put something on the cement and stuff like that, when you put that, yeah, cover the cement, I mean, tape it off, or whatever, because that's gonna be a mess.
Yeah, okay.
And also, on the village signs, where are, are we ever gonna put our village signs back up? back up?
Oh, we had one that was, that fell down out in two seventy-six.
Well, the one at the bridge road is missing still.
I have no idea where it is, you guys were dealing with that, you and John were dealing with it.
I know, I'm supposed to pick them up, and I don't know what happened after that.
You know, I mean, that's before the three of us were on work.
George, the other mayor, there's the old thing.
Okay, we're getting our administrator a little bit there.
I, I went over and took pictures, and are you talking about the frame that's vacant inside?
Yeah.
But right in front of that is the new village sign that was at the gilding painted on it.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, so I think that is a replacement for the other one.
There's an empty frame there, but, but the new sign that got re-
Repainted?
Yeah, that's been up, just like in this south of the village too, it's in front of that frame.
Well, why are we leaving that frame there?
Good question.
I think the town put that in, is that the one the town did?
That's what I, that's what I mentioned to you, brother, you know, I don't know.
Now that's a sign.
It used to say, I think, on the Champaign, remember there was one coming in from Chatham, so I think that's what that was, it's not ours.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else, sir?
Uh, the water plant is continuing, they're flushing and they're, they're all done, flushing, but they have to flush again, and they'd like the help of the DPW to give them a hand on this, and they're gonna pressure wash the exterior of the water plant and possibly paint it, get some paint on, so.
Okay, as far as the DPW helping out, I, I see that there's a number of the DPW workers have water D license, distribution licenses, and I think the purpose of that was so they could work on, on the distribution part of it, so, we'll have to, I think administrator's working on getting a, getting a definitive answer on what distribution, what that actually constitutes, you know, what it is, so, we'll, she's looking at that.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Trustee Arnold?
Okay, I've got one on it tonight, it's concerning our, our walking path, we had the opportunity to get over a thirty thousand dollar very generous grant to connect with a couple paths around this building, it's, the path is consistent with a lot of thousand and forty feet long, we've got some figures from, from Brian Tulkey on the village's end of it, we've got a figure from a paving company on what it's gonna cost to transport and to put the two different types of pavement down the base scope and then an hour code on top of that. Last I knew, we were waiting for, for a memorandum of understanding, did we see, received that, Gina?
Yes, it's a good sign.
And you?
Okay, the sign is back in there, and we also, just before the meeting, had, it was faxed to me, it was faxed to the recreation director, and she gave to me the sign for the first ten thousand dollar payment, that'll be, that'll, the check will be written in three weeks, but it's, it's being hand carried tomorrow, so, the first ten thousand dollar payment is available and we can purchase the stone down and, you know, we can have a carryover until then, so, just, that's what I wanted to mention as well, so.
All right, thank you. So we're gonna go with the ware pavement for the taco, it's like anyone else, you try to figure out where they come up with the money, but they're gonna get, they want sixteen thousand four hundred just for transporting it and for applying it, and that was the lowest bid we received. There was other paving companies that didn't have an interest in it because they didn't have a five foot paver. Cody said he's looked at some work that this ware has done, and he said it looked pretty good, so, I haven't personally looked at their work and I'm not really familiar with these guys. Northern Black Talk was the only other company that was interested in giving us some price, and the village's cost share and that as far as, not cost share, but the village's cost of materials for the base to, and everything, and to run a conduit line for future lighting out there was twelve thousand four hundred or twelve thousand eight hundred dollars. So, the total between the wares and the village is twenty-nine thousand two hundred, and we were hoping that with the thirty thousand, we might be able to get some exercise equipment or something, but at least that's not gonna happen this, this go around, but.
The, the village is not paying anything, this and this, right, so there's no village share.
No, right, what's all my-
I mean, it's all, the money is all from the town.
That's right, that's what I said, thirty thousand dollar grant, and the work the village is doing is, is twelve thousand eight hundred and the ware is sixteen four, that's what it is, yeah.
Great.
So they plan, they plan on signing that tomorrow, I think Brian was talking about, as long as we got the board approval tonight.
We already approved the project start, so we don't need to do anything.
Okay.
We got the MOU signing, the money's on its way, so there's no more need for it about.
Wonderful, yeah, thank you.
Please get it going, thank you. Madam Administrator, do you have any reports?
I do not.
Mr. Treasurer?
Just a couple items. The auditors were here last week, so that went well, they'll be sending a report for regards to that. We are gonna have training in the next three days on our new utility building software, we went, we are going live as of tomorrow, so just let us know about that. And the other thing is, is I sent a memo to the board regarding our current copier, our lease is coming up in March of two thousand seventeen, and the village clerk and myself met with Dave Reynolds from the Simquest Company, who has our current copier contract. Right now, the current lease terms, we're paying two nineteen forty-four a month for the, for the lease, you know, we're paying six, six point seven cents for black pages and five point one cents for colored print pages. They are running a promotion right now through June thirtieth, where they will pay the last six months of our lease, also pay to have the new copier replace the transportation costs to move the thing, upgrade to a Konica Minolta copier, the payments on that would be two oh nine forty-seven for five years, which is probably ten bucks less a month that we're paying now. The black ink pages would be four point nine cents and colors four point two cents, which are also all the current figures.
When's your recommendation in there?
Uh, we'd like to, I talked to everybody pretty much in the office, and we'd like to move ahead forward and take advantage of the software. Right now, according to him, he said the Konica Minolta copier is the number one brand on the market.
I haven't seen that memo yet, did you send it out by email or?
Uh, well, no, I didn't, no, it was marketed generally, but I wasn't in the office today, so I'm not exactly sure what happened.
Okay, when is our current lease up?
Our current lease is up March twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, we have to start the paperwork on this prior to June thirtieth.
Okay, well, gentlemen, we have an opportunity for an upgraded copier, a best cost, and we currently have, have no cost for the transportation over the building, right, and removal of the other one.
I made a motion that we purchase this.
Okay, motion made by trustee Arnold that we take advantage of the promotional offer for the new Konica Minolta printer, and the current lease rates are offering, can we second on that?
Second.
Second by trustee Moore. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, forward. Okay, do we move forward with that, sir?
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all.
All right, once again, you know, maybe we wanna make a closing comment before we move to adjournment and then executive session, so, I'd like to mention anything on your mind right now, you might be able to put it on the next agenda, or?
Can it be regarding what we were just, what you guys were talking about?
Yeah, you can make comment on it, we won't have a discussion, but we'll certainly listen to the-
I'm new to the area, my name is James Kirk, and I ain't called Mr. Hyde.
Uh-huh.
Thank you. Just talking about the trashcans with the smaller holes in the top, that you, I probably thought it's the tighter lid, you wanna be sure you can lock the tighter lid down, if it doesn't have the locking capability, somebody might put one of the stunts and take the top and dump it.
Right, okay, thank you. Always good idea, make sure we look at all, all options, so, always good, thank you, sir. Any other comments? Okay, I'd like to, your motion to go and adjourn the meeting for now while the public leaves, and then we'll go into executive session to discuss the money, history, to incorporate it some.
Take that motion.
Motion to adjourn by trustee Moore.
Second.
Second by trustee Arnold, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.